I would like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular session of the Booton Township Board of Education held for the purpose of transacting appropriate board business in compliance with Chapter 231, laws of nineteen seventy-five. The notice of this meeting was advertised in the Morris County Daily Record. Copies of the agenda of this meeting were appropriately posted and available to the public. Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mr. Brantner.
Here.
Mrs. Cabana. Mr. Chen.
Here.
Mr. Eaton.
Here.
Mrs. Hermy.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. LeVar.
Here.
Mrs. McBride.
Here.
Also present, Dr. Angelo, superintendent principal. And I say, "For which stands the nation, for the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all." And at this time, we would like to welcome our student representative, now from the high school, Madison McBride. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Madison McBride. I'm a junior at MLHS, and I'm here to report on the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year is off to a really good start. Our fall sports have begun with our football team off to a three-to-zero start. This Friday is the homecoming game against Hanover Park at the Turp at seven P.M. There are a few more home games that you can watch the rest of the week. Girls soccer plays tomorrow on Saturday, boys soccer and volleyball plays on Friday. Field hockey, cross-country, and girls tennis also have away games this week. We have our homecoming dance this Saturday night sponsored by the Student Government Association. Unlike last year when the dance was on the Turp, this year it will be held on the gym. Other events include our annual club fair this Friday. We have over twenty clubs that students can sign up for and get involved in. There are also almost a hundred college representatives visiting our school in November sixteenth. Juniors and seniors can register through audiants to attend one of the events. This is a great way to show interest in schools and get to know more about them. Some of the top schools attending are Boston University, Georgetown, Johns Hopkins, Lee High, Notre Dame, Princeton, University of Richmond, Vanderbilt, Villanova, Washington University, and St. Louis, and many more. Also announced today, there are twenty-three seniors who are National Merit Commended Scholars. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as always, what we say to all our student representatives, if you have somewhere else you need to be, like homework or something else, we understand and feel liberal. We'll be event. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
And at this time, may it continue. May I motion for a report? This is motion number one.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
No.
Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on adoption report, this is motion number one. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. And any abstentions?
It's not real.
And thank you. That brings us to administrative reports, starting with the business administrator, board secretary's report. Mr. Murray.
Just a couple of items. The school year got off to a great start. We may have noticed that the parking lot has been cleared out from a lot of the materials out there. Since the start of school, the roofing contractor has been limited to only working on weekends. So they've had the entire Labor Day weekend, and they've worked the past couple of weekends to get it all done. They had all the demolition done, they have all the replacement of the roofing system in, and the only thing they have to do this weekend would be the flashing and the drain spouts and everything else. They should have that pretty much wrapped up. We probably only have a couple of punchless items going forward. All of the building systems appear to be in good working order with no issues to report. The auditors, as I mentioned at a previous meeting, finished up their field audit. During the final phase of drafting the audit, they'll probably get me a copy within the next couple of weeks that I can review with them. And the final audit will be issued and presented to the board for acceptance at a meeting in the near future, possibly October. And the deadline actually applies to December, so we're ahead of schedule.
Thank you. That brings us to the superintendent's report, Dr. Interlittell.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to everyone. We're off and running this school year. My thanks to all of you, as always, for your support, to our administration, to our staff, our parents, our community partners, especially from the Education Foundation, the HSA, Booton Township Police, for all they've done to help us get off to a great start. It really has been remarkable so far this year. The atmosphere is positive, it's very purposeful, extremely energetic, so we're off to a wonderful start. I'm also pleased to report that we have partnered again this year with Hearts and Hands LLC, who will be offering four programs in the evening throughout the year to RBS parents on topics ranging from cyber safety to social emotional well-being. All of that information can be found on our school website and will continue to update our parents as those people who's near. Class-three officer update. So I'm pleased to announce that retired Detective Lieutenant John Fox was sworn in as our first class-three officer at the September twelfth Township Committee meeting. I was able to attend and take part in the evening along with Mr. Brantner and Mrs. Cabana. We were joined by Sheriff Gannon, by Senator Buco. Truly is a momentous occasion for us at RBS, and with the board's support, Chief Ketchabave and I were able to bring this process to fruition over the last three and a half months or so. So I'm very appreciative also to the Township Committee, led by Mayor Aleary, to all of them for their commitment to school safety, and I'm grateful for the partnership that we have with them. A quick update on strategic planning. So Charlene Peterson will be joining us at next month's meeting to present briefly on the strategic planning process. We'll obviously be looking at where we are now and where we hope to be five years down the road as we assess the district's strengths and opportunities for growth. So we'll be putting information out to our community regarding methods for them to participate once we finalize plans with Charlene, who again will be here at our meeting on October nineteenth. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. That brings us to commendations, and that brings Interlittell back together.
Commendations this evening. Congratulations to the faculty and staff on a wonderful opening of the school year and for their great presentations at back-to-school night. A thank you to our service squad members, Lila Wills, Bolin Lopez, Braden Long, and Megan Pang, for their assistance as student ushers at the back-to-school nights. And much appreciation to the Booton Township Police Department for their diligence in providing visibility and accessibility with frequent walkthroughs of the building and their help during drop-off and pickups.
Thank you. And there is no correspondence this evening, so that brings us to open session number one. The first public comment period will be limited to agenda items only. The second public comment period will be open to any topic. Please be mindful that public comment periods are available to enable the public to give comments and feedback to the board. Personal matters and day-to-day operations are not appropriate sometimes for board meetings. These can always be most effectively resolved with the appropriate staff members or administrators according to the change in plan concept. Questions may be directed to the appropriate school personnel or board through email. Please state your name and address for the record, and all comments are limited to five minutes. Would anyone from the public wish to address the board on agenda items at this time? Okay, we'll move on to these on the reports, starting with the Education Foundation.
So, the Education Foundation's a big annual fundraiser. They do charity silent auction and party at the beginning of every year. It's famous denim and diamonds, and super happy to report they have over a hundred and twenty people registered. It's gonna be amazing. The prizes are awesome, and this year they're implementing an online silent auction, so even if you can't make the event, you can still participate in the silent auction. And they're just excited. It's a huge fundraiser for the high school and for RBS together, so that's great. The Fort Kids starts on October third, and they have a hundred and forty-four registrations so far. For kids, there's like lots of new programs, and we have a lot of RBS teachers participating again, so it just feels good. It feels so normal, you know? They're just really excited about what's going on. Yeah, they say looking forward to a successful and enjoyable night for the community.
Thank you. And that brings us to Holy School Association.
So last week, the HSA had the first meeting of the year, school year, I should say. Very successful, lots of new faces, so it's good to see they have packed house for it. So I think really what they were going through is setting up some of their great fundraisers for the rest of the year, or at least the start of the year. You know, coming up is the book fair, coming up in the end of October, I think it's the twenty-fourth or the twenty-eighth, if I'm not mistaken. And then, of course, is the annual fund run, which certainly we have kids in school here sometime around early in November, so there's a lot of planning going on there. In general, they just had a very positive meeting, like Lee said, same with the BTEF. They're very excited, very good energy, and I think they're working on lots of great things this year.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to Morris County School Boards Association. We'll come back to that. The School Boards Association. Thank you. Uh, county committee, Mrs. Cabana.
Um, I do not have anything to report at this moment. No, I do not have anything to report.
Dr. Angelo reported on some of the township committee matters.
I'm sorry.
I updated on the last year, officer.
Yeah, and the only thing is, I mean, off the cuff, I know, is like, I know they're doing a flu booster vaccines, October sixth, if I'm not mistaken. That sound right? October sixth, so other than that, that is all.
Okay, thank you. And let's see, we will go to actually Morris County School Boards Association.
Sorry, I had a coughing. Yes, I'm. The next meeting is next Wednesday, the twenty-eighth. It's a hybrid meeting. It's at Montpel, Township High School, which is from the tenth person, and then there's a follow-up.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to the now to the next.
Good evening, everyone. Mostly technology updates at the last meeting. Good news, the high school has rolled out Genesis, which I believe we're still using here, so that would be familiar to everyone. There have been lots of classroom upgrades with things like Sharp boards, internet wireless and access points, Chromebooks, copiers, just really a lot of technology stuff. It was also mentioned that the high school is using something called Lincoln Form A, which probably our teachers here are more familiar than us, but at any rate, it allows for predictive baseline and differentiation when it comes to instruction and the ability to adjust pacing, so it all sounds great. Lots of fundraisers, bake sale, things like that. If anyone here has high school students, I'm sure you get all of those notifications. There are tons of them. The district is seeking an architect of record, so I believe that posting might be out soon and not already, so if you're an architect, it might be interesting. Fall drama is coming up in November, and someone mentioned at the last meeting that there is an opportunity to have a plaque, make a donation, and have a plaque on the seats in the new auditorium, so if you wanna commemorate someone or put your own name, I guess. I don't know anything about pricing or any of the details or how many seats are up for donation. That's pretty much it. General sense around the school is really good, off to a good, good year. As for some of the previous reports, it's just nice to have everything feel normal. Kids are all excited. This week is spirit week, and again, today was anything but backpack day, so children were bringing their books in coolers and shopping carts and all kinds of fun stuff. So just having two kids there, I get the sense they're both having lots of fun, and so far it seems like a pretty good vibe. That concludes our report.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to the Educational Services Commission. They met the last Wednesday, the fourteenth. Nothing to report, other than routine business is happening. And that brings us to the county committee.
So, quick update. The Green Team met a couple of weeks back. The next meeting is October seventh, three P.M. at Town Hall. If you guys drove past, you may have noticed that the garden had been cleaned up a little bit, so a shout-out, thank you to the Schreger family, Mrs. Kovar, Mrs. Fusco, who are teachers here, Lee, and myself. We came over the weekend, uh, but we pulled out a bunch of stuff, so we've at least gotten it started. We're gonna try to get some more help to probably fill in those beds a little bit and get them ready hopefully for the spring. Um, yeah, so I think that's the main update. I think we're just building some momentum there and hopefully getting some things more active with the environmental club that's here at RBS and working with the administration here to see what we potentially can do together. So, that's the update.
Great, thank you very much. And there are no facilities transportation motions, so that brings us to finance motions one through six. May I motion, please?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of finance, finance motions one through six, all those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Any abstentions? And that brings us to personnel motions one through seven. May I motion, please?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of personal motions one through seven. This is Ro Paul. Mrs. Ford.
Yes.
Mr. Brantner.
Yes.
Mrs. Cabana.
Yes.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
Mrs. Hermy.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. LeVar.
Yes.
Mrs. McBride.
Yes.
Dr. Carrie. Thank you. The next items on the agenda are program motions one through two. May I motion, please? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of program motions one and two, all those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Any abstentions? And that brings us to policy motion number one, for the policies we introduced at the last meeting. And then we'll go into the first reading of the policies after that, so may I motion for a policy motion number one?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Murray figured that out. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Okay, if not, the questions on the adoption of policy motion number one, all those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Any abstentions? And that brings us to first readings of these next five policies, which I'm just trying to get my notes. Okay, starting with policy fifty-one thirty-one point three, student vehicles, we renamed, I guess we renamed the title, bicycles and similar vehicles. Those people ride things other than bicycles these days. There are electronic bicycles, skateboard things, all sorts of interesting things people might ride to school. We've updated the language, uh, let's see, it looks like one sentence, well, two-sentence policy, but we updated the language where it says, "The student reference form unfiled in the school office to," say instead, "in the student information system current portal." So we're just referencing a second paper or something to the thing in Genesis. Bus conduct is fifty-one thirty-one point four. We had to renumber it to fifty-one thirty-one, from fifty-one thirty-one point one, because fifty-one thirty-one point four is not a school board's, like, sample policy per se, and another policy that is a sample policy sort of took that number, so we renamed it to fifty-one thirty-one point four. We replaced paragraph two, and sentence two, with language which was not quite clear, and so the sentence, yep, paragraph two, sentence two was corrected, so if we compare those pieces of the policies, we'll see what it is. But basically, the language is not quite clear, and we quit such responsibility, shall continue when the travel is delivered to the school in the morning, and until left at their regular bus stop at the closing of school day before, there's some language that was confusing. And then, policy fifty-one thirty-one point five, vandalism and violence, we revised it to be almost identical to the school boards' recommended policy, which would consist of deleting paragraph two, deleting paragraph three, and the bullets with that. And paragraph four, we just replaced the language from the recommended language in the recommended policy. It says, "The principal of the school shall notify the superintendent principal," but since they're one and the same person, that's an odd thing to put in our policy, so we just said, "The superintendent principal shall be notified to clarify that." Policy fifty-one thirty-three is just re-adopted, no changes. Policy fifty-one thirty-six is also re-adopted, no changes. And for anyone that hasn't been here in the past, these policies could be around since the eighties and nineties, and periodically we review them, and if there's no change, we re-adopt them just to show that we looked at them, and if there's changes that are suggested or recommended by school boards or us, we make those changes. And with that, those are the first readings. If anyone has any questions about those or comments, send them to us or in public. And with that, we have no technology motions, which gets us to the second public comment period. The second public comment period will be open to any topic. Please be mindful that public comment periods are available to the name of the public to give comments and feedback to the board. Personal matters and day-to-day operations are not appropriate sometimes for meetings. These can always be most effectively resolved with the appropriate staff members or administrators according to the change in plan concept. Questions may be directed to the appropriate school personnel or board through email. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments are limited to five minutes. Would anyone from the public wish to address the board on any matter?
I lean Brantner, nine Maple Drive. I would like to report on the Booton Township Special Educational Advisory Group, CPAG. Parent leaders spent this summer to put together a schedule for the upcoming school year, which is chock full of parent meetings, listening nights, and presentations. We began the school year with a table at our back-to-school nights to let parents know who we are and how to connect with us. On September twenty-eighth, Christine Voorhees, our Director of Special Services, will hold a workshop called "Navigating Special Education at Rockaway Valley School." Details can be found in the virtual webinar. Our CPAG parent meetings begin next month and will be held every third Tuesday from seven-thirty to nine at Rockaway Valley United Methodist Church. Our first meeting on October eighteenth will be a meeting greet for new parents and welcome back old friends. All parents or guardians with a child with a student with disabilities, as well as any community member or educator committed to improving education, of course is welcome. And we have great coffee, stats of pastries, so hoping for a great turnout. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if you don't eat those pastries and things, I know where they go, somewhere. Thank you. Any else from the public wish to address the board on any matter?
Ellen Hardy, twenty-four Splinter Road. I'd like to start out by thanking the administration for publicizing this meeting. I saw that it's now listed on the scrolling calendar on the website, which is excellent, and it was on the electronic marquee starting on Mondays, a whole two days before the meeting, which is great. Just glad to see that there's never being made to alert the community to board event meetings. I'm also here to ask yet again for the administration and Board of Education to share handouts with the public at Board of Education meetings. As a Board of Ed member has stated before, there's no reason why the public shouldn't also have access to any appropriate public handouts in advance or even at the meeting itself. I understand anything that's private or involves legal issues cannot be shared, of course. In Mountain Lakes, they actually circulate handouts along with agendas in advance of meetings. For those of you on the board who don't have kids at the high school, I have actually an example here to share with you, what's actively sent to us via email on Fridays before their regular Tuesday meetings. I'll pass it around so that you can take a look at it. The important thing to note is that I've only included a few pages of their handouts, because I think in the last one, they're so comprehensive that there were like a hundred and sixty pages worth of handouts. They put all of their financials in there, so you can scroll through. And in this one in particular that is circulating, you'll see that they actually have their proposed policy changes highlighted in red, so if you're not on the policy committee, you can see super easily what is, what's being proposed to be changed, so I thought that that was helpful. But the reason that I'm bringing up handouts again tonight specifically is because the next October meeting is where Dr. Lendis is going to include a presentation on NJSLA scores. In this particular case, I wanted to make sure that you know that I have already been working up the chain of command. I wrote a note to Dr. Lendis asking for the public to have a copy of her presentation to follow along. Having seen her present the test results the last few years, please understand, for those of you who haven't seen it, it is a super data-intensive presentation, and, you know, having worked in the corporate world, when it's a data-heavy presentation like that, it's customary to hand it out. So as the presenter is going through the data, you can circle things, make notes, so that when it's an appropriate time to ask questions, you can, you're prepared with the data in front of you. Without a copy of the presentation in hand or electronically, it's very difficult to ask questions immediately following the presentation. So Dr. Lendis authorized Ms. Biggerton to respond to me on her CPAG, and I just wanted to share the response. It was, "The presentation will be given in a PowerPoint format for the public to follow along. The presentation will be posted the following day. When presentations like this bear in mind it's being made to the board, of course, should you have a general question, it may be asked during one of the appropriate open session periods. Specific questions should be mailed to the appropriate administrator for a response." I know they're always happy to respond via email, answer questions over the phone, or even meet in person. So that was the response that I received. And based on that response from the administration, I have three questions.
There's one minute remaining.
I'm sorry?
One minute remaining.
Okay. Why wouldn't you want the board and the public to have handouts available so they can better analyze the presentation and ask questions during the meeting? And if the presentation is only being made to the board, will there be a separate presentation where the data will be shared with the public so that we can ask questions? And finally, if our new district goal is to enhance community engagement and communication, why wouldn't the administration leverage this data to engage a meaningful dialogue on academics with the community on what's working and what we can do together to improve?
Okay, thank you. Dr. Hello, would you do something? You want to answer that one or?
Um, you know, I didn't get it to Mrs. Hardy, but I'll go back to her.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for your comments.
Okay, I, this would be great if you could have handouts.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And for that, would anyone else want to address the board on any matter? Okay, well, I'm concerned the whole business would come before the board. Is there any business to come before the board?
Um, yeah, I just, I wanted to touch base on one of our board goals is to focus on training for us, to stay in board training with the Jersey School Boards Association during the year, and it came up that if we were still qualified as Carol Larson Certified Board, so Barry and I reached out to Charlene Peterson, and she got back to me, so I just wanted to share with you. It says, "In order for the certification or engagement, the board needs to accumulate these board credits a year. One hour of training as a full board equals one credit. Board credits have a four-year lifespan, and they drop off. Below is board sheet, it's a transcript, which I can share with Barry later. They should have sixteen credits over a four-year period, so it currently has board credits over a four-year period, and as a result, the board needs to restart the certification process. The board will receive three credits for engaging in the strategic planning process." So the multiple, just stuff. So if we want to, this is just something to think about if we want to go to. It's, um, Barry, can you?
It's, uh, if the board, I guess, achieves a certain amount of training over this four-year period, you achieve that level, so you maybe will be able to achieve it twice.
It's just sort of a certification that's indicative that the board is.
Activity, yeah, activity.
Master or something.
It's indicative we're actively pursuing the training, and it's a.
Keeping up on training.
A good, a good thing for a board to do.
And for a community.
So with that, what we'll do is we'll circulate a, I think they have a two-year-old pamphlet on, and there also is a website that has kind of the same stuff, so I'll circulate both of those things to all of you and ask you to rank them. What would you like to see? You know, ask for Charlene for at least, at least one credit, we'll have four for the year, or if not more, if we can, a reasonable, can be bought, and then see where we, see if we can get over into our upcoming meetings and take it to there.
We went into spot.
Um, well.
I know we have four.
Yeah, so we still have board credits. So the credits were between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Yeah, maybe we have dropped off with the, you know, personal meetings and pandemic stuff.
Right.
Okay, well, we'll catch up again.
Okay.
It's all good. But thank, thank you. And is there any other business you'd like to put to the board? Just one thing. Two things, one on this, two business. Okay, okay, with that, may I entertain a motion to enter into executive session discussions of more confidentiality, as permitted in the Open Public Meetings Act, chapter two, thirty-one of the laws of nineteen seventy-five. These matters may or may not be made public when the board reaches the end, they won't be made public when they're confidentially, the subject is no longer warranted. We have two items. One is student matters, and two will be the agreement between Booton Township and Alphards and. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Student residency, I'm sorry if I said student matters, I meant student residency. And will there be any action taken? Yes. There will be action taken over the re-convince. Okay, and with that, may I make a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And there will be action taken over the re-convince, and after that, we'll adjourn. Okay, thank you.[1791.54]
Okay, thank you. We just made a motion to read and read from our closed session at this time. We have other board action. And this motion, OVA dash one, resolution number 2222 dash four, a resolution of intentional education authorizing improving incentive application.
Move.
Is there a second? And we already had discussion. This is Ro Paul.
This is Fordham.
Yes.
This is Brandon.
Yes.
This is Cabana.
Yes.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
This is Hermy.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Levar.
Yes.
Mrs. McBride.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And for the record, we checked the lobby. There were no members in public waiting in the lobby. And at this point, may I have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for coming.